All right. I would like to call the meeting to order of joint general government subcommittee slash town council meeting. It is Wednesday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three at six forty-five, or immediately following PPP in the veterans' room at Southbridge Town Hall. Uh, this is being recorded by audio and video. Agenda item number one is call the meeting to order. Agenda item number two is roll call. Uh, Council Marquetti.
Present.
Council Dow.
Present.
Citizen member Clemens.
Present.
Citizen member Kelly.
Present.
Council Montigny is present. Five present, may have quorum. Agenda item number three is review and discuss the town manager's appointment of Marcelino Guerra to the WRTA Advisory Board Disabled Commuter Population Position effective January first, twenty twenty-four, and ending on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Appointment pending successful completion of state ethics. Entertain a motion for approval to town council.
Trouble.
Okay. Okay, and uh, Mr. Manager.
Thank you. Uh, this came through us, to us through the uh, WRTA, actually. Mister Guerra had put him to be considered for a disabled commuter population position with WRTA. Um, they keep a list of individuals that have requested that, and then they rotate throughout the towns that they service. Because our town hadn't had a recent person, our town was selected, so then they notify Manny. Manny then comes to us and asks for an appointment. It has to come from the town council. So we appoint him to the, it's a one-year position from January of twenty twenty-four to December of twenty twenty-four. So that appointment, everything came from the WRTA. He expresses the interest, and he submits a letter to us, and then he asks us for consideration. And we send a letter upon appointment, we send a letter, he serves in that position for a year, for the region.
Fantastic. Uh, does anybody have any discussion? Council Dow.
Thank you, Chair Tru. That person live in town?
Yeah, it's a town resident.
Have to be a town resident.
They have to be a town resident.
Cause they came from the WRTA.
Right, but it has to be, he actually lives, uh. He just put something to mass, but he does, he did tell me where he lives. He is a Southbridge resident.
Okay. Do we know anything else about him besides?
Oh, yep, he's a co-founder of Blackstone Construction, Assistant Program Director, R K Boston Treatment Program Youth Board, and it was the youth center, so. He fits criteria for the disabled population, so.
Okay. Does anybody else have any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Agenda item number four is review and discuss the town manager's proposed policy procedure on the disposition of surplus items. Entertain a motion for approval to town council.
Second.
Mister Kelly, okay, and Mister Manager.
Thank you, through you. This came about as I took my chapter thirty B uh, course, when we dispose of surplus property. Um, I was reviewing what the town's policy was. All we had was this one-page policy that was not very detailed, that's two procedures. According to chapter thirty B, says that if we value anything less than ten thousand, you must follow. There's a bid procedure, anything over ten thousand, you have to go out to, you know, you have to advertise it for bids. If it's under ten thousand, you have to follow written procedures approved by your jurisdiction's governing body. If you do not have written procedures, you must establish before disposal. So what I'm doing is, it's a very detailed policy procedure as to, um, and it just models the chapter thirty B requirements.
Okay. Uh, does anybody have any discussion on this? Uh, Miss Clemens?
So, um, read through, and I was glad to see a lot of the details. Because, you know, they, obviously, as you said, they were lacking, and we have disposed of um, surplus in the past, and there was always been questions as to the proper way to do it. Or what do you do when nobody wants it? How do you dispose of things? And that's where I'm a little concerned, um, just about the final disposal of things. Uh, I guess it could be.
Sold over, have no resale or salvage value?
Yeah, when you've got like, uh, some of your items here of information, it just says, um, if the surplus goods, right, for instance, D under that section, that's the last page for those who are looking. If surplus goods or, or equipment have no resale value or salvage value, the town manager shall instruct the department head to dispose of such property at the least cost of a district. Okay, but number two, the items may be junked, scrapped, or disposed of at the department head's discretion. Um, so there have been in the past, way past, certain, um, concerns that have risen at times about appropriateness of disposal. I guess, if I'm being delicate with the, with the matter. Not to say that I accuse anybody or anything of any wrongdoing. But obviously, we don't want that to, right, we don't want appearances, we don't want anything. So if, if this is now allowing you to dispose of cer- or to, to allow them to dispose of things as well, the department heads. And while recycling and scrapping and all that good stuff and trying to get money is important, where's the bottom line that? So if we can't get anything from a surplus bid, or we can't get anything from, you know, from putting it online or surplus bid. What, I mean, what, what stops somebody from saying, or department head from saying to somebody who might have come up to that department head and said, hey, I'm, I'm interested in this thing you got. You know, that bunch of metal or whatever, cause they're gonna sell it, you know, scrap it themselves, say. What, what stops that from happening? What stops any kind of under dealings from happening in this policy? It doesn't appear. It appears if you could say, scrap it, and they could give it away to anybody they choose without anybody else, you know, the public itself then having general ability to take something like a a twice-a-year, here's our scrap pile, anyone, anyone in the public's welcome to come and take it versus let's give it to a friend or a neighbor or, or another colleague. I don't know. I don't know how other towns deal with it. But it certainly left me open to wondering at the very end of things. I, everything was great up until the very last bit of how are you disposing it? Are you insisting it goes in a trash dumpster or, or something? Or you, you know, if it's metal, are you saying then they should be scrapping it officially? And if it's not, if it's boxes of books or something, you don't like to do with it. Is there any thought on that from anybody? Or do we not worry? And we just?
No, I, I certainly understand your, your concern with that.
The appearance of somebody saying, oh, I, oh, what do you, my neighbor got that from the town? How come I didn't get a chance to get that from the town if I wanted it? And I know we can't please everybody, and we can't advertise to everybody who doesn't, who don't look. I just, how do you deal with it then?
What would you, I'm sorry.
Yes, no.
What would you propose? That we have something, some way of putting everything up to say, hey, we have this, we have this scrap?
I mean, I guess, I, I don't know how you, yeah, or if you put out a general list on our cable stations and, and on our website or something, and announcements, a couple of announcements. Sort of like, I mean, a bio lab, it's read three times, so a couple of announcements on town meetings and saying, this is the list, this is, if anyone's of any interest, come and, you know, tell, and you wanna tell us five dollars, ten dollars, no dollars. And then, I guess then, it's, it's considered totally invaluable. I don't know.
Cause we put a lot of stuff up on that auction site.
Right, but not everybody understands that.
Right, sure.
I mean, it's, can be complicated.
Yeah, that, you know, the policy does say that we, we.
Recycle, reuse.
Items with an estimated value over a thousand dollars. You're talking about low dollar items that you can't.
Right, right, so how do you, how do you just get rid of them without saying, yeah, you may as well have that, go ahead, take it away?
And who priced the item?
Yeah, no.
How do you price it? Something that's. I mean, you can only give it to somebody scrap people, or call the scrap guy to come pick it all up and say, you're gone. Um, I don't know, but just something to think about.
Thank you. Um, Council Shenier, see you over there.
Can't, can't we, I know D D W has a, like, for instance, a metal scrap bin at the D D W garage. But isn't that scraps, it's value for the town to cash it in?
They, they did cash in during the recycle, when I believe they did the sub of electronics and all that. We did that at the last take-back event, cause we get dollars for that.
But even some of the stuff that we accumulate as a department or as a town, that's scrap. Cause it's no good, it's metal. Uh, can't we scrap it in, in, in return? Collect that money from the scrapyard?
Yeah, might I say, that's good on the middle, George, but I'm talking about products in general.
Okay.
I think, if I may continue, I think that if, at some point in time, if we as a town decide to go into a transfer station, that the transfer station would have a give and take thing. I think Sturbridge used to have something like that. You could go there and take something if you had it or or something that had some value to it, like for books, for instance, or something like that.
Swap shop?
Yeah.
Like a swap shop.
So maybe if, if we as a community decide that we wanna start looking into a transfer station, once we get the, the trash going, maybe something, a policy can be set up so you, you can go take and give.
Okay, well, um, if we can continue discussion on this policy, um, Council Dow.
Thank you, Chair Tru. Why, what's the reason you come up?
For the, this procedure?
Yeah.
Because the town doesn't have a real detailed formal procedure, and the, the law says you have to.
But, uh, I understand, but what's, you know, we always go through the auction, what's the, what's, uh, now, I know you need to do the procedure, why, why we have to put, you know, item less?
Because there's some items that, like, we have, and one of these is six cell phones. Six cell phones isn't gonna be worth ten thousand dollars. So we have to have, we're supposed to have a written procedure to dispose of this materials. And there's no real formal procedure, so I'm trying to make sure. And I found that, I, actually, this model was taken from another school district, that, it appeared that former town manager McCall was working on this, but never finished it. And when I went through my training and said, well, whatever is our procedure, what do we have? I, I'm just trying to formalize it to make sure that we do everything that we're supposed to do, so.
I, I mean, it's, it's good, you know, we, we doing that procedure, but I'm, I'm thinking we're looking for troubles if we, like, Mister Clemens say, who's gonna, uh, decide which person is gonna take that item, or how much, with no.
Well, it, it's, it's.
Values, no, you can value a truck for nine hundred ninety dollars, and the truck worth five thousand.
There's certain procedures that you have to go through. You have to throw, you have to make sure that you do a value of that truck. You have to look at what the actual cash value of that truck is before you dispose of it, so.
And it's written, it's a written report.
It's written, so we have to Google or whatever, ACV, Kelley Blue Book, whatever Blue Book it is, or NADA, and say, the value is this. And that's what you go for. And the law does allow us to, say we go out to bid. And you go out to bid and, um, you offer eleven thousand, you offer eight thousand.
I don't have the auction.
I, no, no. And then somebody comes to me and says, I'll give you sixteen thousand for that. I don't have to take your bids off the bid. I can, I. The, the, the reason for this pro- uh, procedure and chapter thirty B procedures is that the town gets the most value out of the things that the taxpayers have paid for.
Can you do locals auction for their residents, or no?
We can do whatever auction we want, as long as we post it.
The, the.
Cause this procedure though, is, and I get to, uh, Mister Clemens' point. Perhaps I'll add for the town council, may dispose as a department head's discretion upon approval of the town manager.
Right, and that would, at least a check and balance.
Balance that says.
That's kinda what I was.
You know, I, I understand that, I, until you said that, I said, I could see your point. Well, the department head could just say, make a deal. You wouldn't, I think you would want that?
But still, at least there's two.
At least they, they have a check and balance and say, hey, I went through this whole process, the town manager, who is the chief procurement officer by charter, now signs off and says, okay, yes, you did follow those procedures, so I'll add that upon, upon approval of the town manager.
He's, he could, he could just say, for instance, those six cell phones? He can say, yeah, you couldn't give them, all right, somebody wants to take them, it was gonna cost us this much to dispose of them. That guy's gonna take them, I don't care what he does, just get rid of it. You know what I'm saying? He could make that judgment call, because it would be less money to give something away to somebody than to, to dispose of, so it makes sense.
So, Miss Clemens' point makes sense, and your correction makes sense, and the, this is just really something proactive that the town manager has done, because during his training, it has come to his attention that we didn't have a policy for the smaller stuff. It's really just there because we have to follow the law. Um, as, but we should get it right, and that's a great point. So, if anybody has any other discussion on the policy in front of us, um, Mister Clemens?
Yeah, I just wanna say, this is, I, I did read through this and compared it with the statute, it pretty much tracks the statute.
It does, yeah.
Again, it's almost identical. Um, so, uh, I, I agree with Miss Clemens, however, um, I, I, I'm, I'm a little concerned about if the surplus goods or equipment ha- have no resale established value, who determines that? Um, I mean, in your, your example, for instance, in, in Miss Clemens' example, the fact that somebody comes to you, comes to you and says, oh, I, I, you know, I like that, that scrap metal. But, you know, blinds, I mean, that's pretty much signals that there is some value to that, right, to somebody. So, how do you determine, um, what has, uh, no resale or salvage value? Who determines that?
I think that's after you go out to bid, or you posted it, and they said, hey, there's no possible way that you sold it, or salvaged it, then you, then you get rid of it.
And then I just think.
Or something that's a total burnt, burnt, that's, you know.
Because we have a process now for surplus goods, and, and there's a way to determine something surplus, so if it has value, it goes into some sort of process and procedure, and if it doesn't ha- have value, it goes away. And this is just a policy, because there is not a written policy. Uh, it, like, outside of this policy, though, there is a way to deem something surplus, or not, there's nothing to do with this policy.
Yes, master.
Yeah.
And I understand your point. It really does come up because there have been issues in the past where somebody determines, well, it's just garbage down here in this basement, I'm gonna throw it away.
You know my.
You know what I mean? And we didn't have a policy, so if, if now, this is an established policy, this is the steps you have to go through. And ultimately, when we declare something surplus, it goes to council to declare it a surplus, as you can see in the other agenda items. So, it has to come to council. You decide, because you're responsible, I'm responsible, you're responsible for all town property.
Yeah, this is just.
That's why you have a mechanism, it's town dollars, it's taxpayers' dollars that you're trying to get the best money back from it.
Relax, all right? Do you have any more, do, do you have any more discussion on the item and not about me?
Don't talk to me like that.
Do you have discussion on the item? Don't talk to me like that.
Don't talk to me like that.
Do you have discussion on the item?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please continue, Council Dow.
Who decide, if Joe or Marquetti want it, who decide who's gonna take it?
Who decides?
Yeah, let's say the auction.
Go through the process.
If, if, if the auction and all that done, and, and nobody buy it, and now you're gonna dispose of it, and two employee want, one of them want it, and the other want it, who will decide? Uh, who's gonna have that disposal, not to fight or create a problem in, in the department?
Well, then there's value to it, right? If you want it, you wanna pay me ten dollars, and you want to be paid five, then you get it for ten dollars.
So at the end of the day, it's gonna be valued with money, not like somebody just give it.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you're gonna have a fight over who wants it, that means it's a value. So you wanna give me ten, you wanna give me five, you want then going to fifteen?
Yeah.
The, 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 the purpose behind this statute is that unlike the other bidding processes where you take the lowest, here you take the highest. Whatever money you can get for the town, of value is what you do. That's why you have the best practice to do that.
Okay, Miss Clemens?
Perhaps including in that, where it's gonna be the determination, you and the, uh, your final say or whatever, um, that a little line after exhausting all legal possibility, or whatever it is, some, you know, some sort of possibilities, the town manager.
I'll add something.
You know, some sort of a line that just, cause it makes it kinda more strenuous that you've, you, it, it tells the public, look, we're, we're doing all the, all the appropriate methods, and now we make the decision. And I, I just think it'd sound nice in there, you know, after exhausting all uh, reasonable, uh, reasonable, reasonable standard is difficult, isn't it, to prove in court? Um, however, so you might not use the word reasonable, but you know, after exhausting all legal statute, whatever determinations, match general law requirements, procurement requirements, the town manager and the.
I think you have made a great point, that there needs to be some, some button-up language at the ends of some of these lines in here, and I think the town manager seems to agree. So does anybody else have any more discussion about this? Uh, yes, Mister Clemens?
One more thing, um, and this is really, uh, I just think that, I, I'm going through here, there's one on section D, paragraph one, the last word says district, it should be town, just.
You know, it's funny, I saw that, but I didn't mark it when I was reading. I remember thinking, okay, district.
No, I saw it too in, uh, F three, it says district treasurer will be town treasurer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Agenda item number five, review discuss the town manager's recommendation to declare surplus from the Jacob Edwards Library, twenty-one tower personal computers, and ancillary equipment, one computer scanner, and electrical items left over from construction. Entertain a motion for approval to town council. Okay, Mister Manager?
Margaret takes her procurement very seriously, and she had detailed every item that is no longer of use. And then went to our IT director for verification, so everything has been declared as surplus and obsolete, and no longer valuable to the town. And some of the electrical equipment had been sitting up in the attic for a little while, um, and we're trying to do another project, uh, with insulation up there. So, I came forward again, so.
Okay. Um, so I saw Council Shenier, but, uh, Council Marquetti, you have the table, if you'd like to go first.
Well, I was just curious. Are these going to be offered to the general government, or to the general public now, these computers?
We could put it out to bid and say, hey, if you're welcome to do it, as, they've been wiped, they've been cleaned. If they, if they, somebody thinks they're useful, um, they're not of use to the town any longer, they're older computers.
I would say, even if you don't get any money for them, people will take them. There are a lot of people in town that don't have computers, so. All right, thank you, that's all I wanted.
Okay.
Now, let me answer the question.
Okay.
Being clean.
All right. Does anybody else have any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Agenda item number six, review and discuss the town manager's recommendation to declare surplus from the health department, six cell phones. Entertain a motion for approval to town council.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mister Manager?
Uh, these were phones that are clean, um, they no longer are of use to the town of Southbridge, we can't, uh, we could drop them off. Uh, Maritza has asked us, there is a, um, possible, uh, domestic violence group that may be able to use them and have them recycled, so we, in that case, we would transfer them to another, uh, program. Uh, because we have the ability to change, to transfer to other governmental programs if we so choose, so with that, uh, she wanted to see if we could give them to them first, um, but we no longer need them.
Okay. Does anybody have any discussion on the six cell phones? Seeing none, all those in favor? Closed, unanimous of all present. Agenda item number seven is review and discuss entering into a contract with S H I International Corp. until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, for up to hundred forty-three thousand, three hundred sixty dollars to provide electronic permitting software, and allow the IT director to purchase technology using the Community Compact IT Grant, accepted December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork. Entertain a motion for approval to town council.
So moved.
Okay, Mister Manager?
So pretty much they explained that it was the grant, so when I came aboard, um, and Matt came up to my office, and Peg was doing a lot of grants and managed a lot of grants, we had, uh, I had tasked Matt to assist, uh, Peg, uh, with this project. Um, and Matt really took the lead in contacting several vendors to evaluate, um, the permanent software. So this would allow us to do online permanent throughout, uh, many departments. Um, it's something that had been asked for by many individuals in the community and in the, um, workforce. It, and, uh, I'll turn it over to Matt and Peg, but I do wanna, they've worked very hard, Matt, Peg, and Victor as well in the IT department, had worked a lot of hours, a lot of vendors, uh, getting the best product that we possibly could for the town of Southbridge. Um, and, uh, I'll let Matt, uh, explain, for those that don't know Matt, Matt is my executive assistant, and then everybody knows Peg, so. Matt?
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
May I come up then?
Yeah, absolutely, please.
I did a quick PowerPoint this afternoon, just to point out a couple of the bullet points that they'd like to address. So as you saw with the supporting documentation, this was a, uh, process that we actually, we, um, interviewed seven companies and we demoed six. Acello, um, was a company that our neighboring town uses. They came to us and said, wait, the first thing that they said to us was, just to let you know, we're very expensive, and I think it was Peg that said, thank you very much, have a nice day. Uh, we then did demonstrations by six companies. Um, all those demonstrations, we invited department heads or the designees to review. We did not wanna be making the, the choices on our own. We then, uh, did evaluations on each, and we ended up choosing a company called Open Gov. Uh, based on customer service, public safety, interdepartmental communications, and cost. When we get to the cost, uh, implementation is going to be sixty-nine thousand, five hundred eighty-five thousand, forty-eight cents. That is going to be, uh, spent during January first through July first of twenty twenty-three. Uh, what that comes with is the training and creating fourteen permits. Each permit, if we have the company do it, is going to be twenty-eight hundred dollars. Once we learn how to do this, we'll be able to really roll with it, and the plan is to roll this out on July first. That portion has been covered by the grant. There is also a software subscription fee, and that will be January first, twenty twenty-three, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. So the first eighteen months of this program, we are not paying for.
It should be twenty-five.
Twenty, I'm, I'm sorry.
Their dates are a little off here, cause we're already at the end of twenty twenty-eight.
Okay. Uh, yes, yep, okay, so, um, and we will not be actually taking any money out of the budget until fiscal year twenty-six. So there's no out-of-pocket expenses for the next eighteen months. IT costs is part of the grant, we're going to purchase, uh, or we're hoping to purchase three desktop computers. One desktop computer will be in, uh, inspections. One up in the town manager's office, and one, um, I believe we're planning on putting up to the DPW. We're also going to purchase four iPads for inspectors, because they will be doing their inspections actually on an iPad in the field, and be able to sync the, the software, and issue an occupancy permit actually from the field with the software. And that is also covered by the grant. I, I've got it just about down to, I think we might have to get a state back five dollars. But if I can spend that five dollars, I'm gonna spend it. Um, departments that will be utilizing this will be the building department, the health department, uh, the assessing department, DPW, economic development and planning, police department, town manager, treasurer collector. Uh, we also have the functionality of putting the fire department on this. And, um, we're working with Chief Normadon to discuss that. On the last page is kind of what our website will look like. There'll be one button on the website, and you'll go to online permitting and, uh, other online services that we'll be providing. Um, and that will, this is just a, a small showing of it. If you would like to really see one that, that, uh, looks really good and is very functional, um, go to the town of Dudley's website, and go to their online permitting. Um, because that, that, that's where this page was taken. Any questions?
Um, thank you. So, like I said, there was a lot of, uh, interest in this, and what, what I think we will find is, one, it's gonna save time um, for our inspectors and personnel, uh, because all that information will be funneled into that system. I had a conversation with Chairman Lauso, uh, yesterday, when we were talking about this program. And he was at a meeting for his, uh, construction supervisor or whatever license, with a bunch of builders, and had a conversation with an individual that does a building commissioner, and that building commissioner, he stated that uh, he will only, he, he can do multiple towns as a building commissioner, because everything is bundled through the online permanent, so it's just a matter of the building inspector can go punch in enough information, and as we see, there's a lot, we don't have a building commissioner at this time. We're sharing it with Webster, so it might be an opportunity for us to either explore a shared service with another town for a building commissioner, and utilize our own local building inspector. Also, we'll look to, um, liquor license permits, uh, class one, class two permits, everything will be done online. All that information will be fed in. I know Mrs. Clemens probably would like the, the tent permit. The building department will be able to do it right online.
So that everybody can apply to the same.
So, um.
And get spot.
You know, so, and then boards and commissions, people that wanna apply for, um, to join, uh, an organ, uh, you know, one of our groups, or they can just go online, fill out this, uh, application. So, uh, we're also talking about, as we move into the curbside collection as well, we talked about this today. We may have the functionality that somebody wants to opt out, they can just go in and fill the form out, or they wanna opt in, they fill, they go online, and then we would have dropdown boxes, so they say, I'm opting out of curbside collection. Well, the regulation is gonna be, you have to provide who your service is gonna be, we could put a bunch of dropdown boxes and put, whether it's all those providers that are out there, you know, so it gives a lot of mu- multi-functionality. and I think we are gonna see a, a cost saving. And also with OpenGov, we're also talking about enhancements to the website, our budget in, our budgets. We may have functionality to then go off of this and be able to publish our budgets to the website, uh, for transparency purposes. So, um, we see this as a, a win-win, um, the fact that we can go into this online and permanent environment that a lot of towns, multiple towns are doing. I do encourage you to go to the Dudley one, you do have to put in an email address, but all that is, it allows you to go through and you can punch in. Uh, I picked an address and said, hey, I want, uh, a smoke detect, uh, a s- uh, burning permit. You know, burning permit, I put my address and you fill out your information, so, uh, I didn't go all the way, because I don't own property in Dudley, but, um, I, I think it's a great move for the town.
Yeah, if this can be something that can make it easier for people to get permits and better for our, you know, system to comply and have all the information, because even when you get a b- a building permit now, you have to resubmit your insurance every single time, which seems kind of silly if you've provided it once for a year's worth of, uh, permits. At least now there's some sort of system that saves, I would hope it could save some sort of information about someone who's pulled a permit, so you can, uh, cross reference, because while this is good for us, we need to be able to make sure that we can continue to be pro-business and help people, uh, get what they need in a timely manner. Um, great, does anybody have any discussion about this at the table, uh, first, um, Council Marketti?
He raised his hand.
No, I'm trying, go ahead.
All right. Uh, although I think it's a good idea, not totally against it, I just have some concerns, because, um, it's good for one year. In F Y twenty-six, so in June twenty twenty-five, we'll be having to re-up this.
Mm-hmm.
The cost every year, the grant covers this first year and a half, but then after that, we have to pay for this every single year, so. Does the cost justify, does that cost, does the savings you're talking about, does that justify that cost? I know that every time I hear about something, I've been on the council for four years. Every time I hear about something that it's too good to be true, or it's really gonna save us a lot of money. I don't necessarily see the savings that we're always talking about, there always seems to be some hidden cost, some training involved. We have to hire more inspectors. We don't even, we can't even hire inspectors now, but you're saying that the inspectors will be able to hire four, we'll have four iPads for four inspectors, but yet we have a hard time hiring inspectors, are we gonna have to hire a full-time inspector? Is that gonna wipe out any savings that we're going to see with, this is just some concerns that I have. I don't necessarily think it's a bad idea, but it's the concerns that I've had after four years of seeing these things that are supposed to help us so much, never seem to help us that much. My other question is, is this gonna reduce my permit fee? Because I have to pay seventy-five dollars to have somebody come over and look at a, a fan in my house. Is that gonna lower my permit fee, or is it just making it easier for the contractor to?
No, I.
Go in for a permit.
Yes, please.
Uh, a couple, we had a lot of questions, we had a lot of points in there. Um, is it gonna reduce costs? No, because we still have to pay the inspector to go, so the inspection fees are for the inspector. I think from an accountability standpoint, a tracking standpoint, filing, you have much more detailed records. The ability for inspectors, say, the fire department has a smoke detector, the building inspector has a C O, they can talk to one another through the iPads and be able to say, hey, I did this, that building is, so that building inspector, fire inspector, they don't have to be together, the fire inspector can pull up the building right online and look at the building inspector's department and say, oh, okay, it was inspected, this was what? Or this is deficient, and there'll be communication. Um, I think that's where you have the savings, uh, somewhat. Why we have four is because you have a, a plumbing inspector, uh, a plumbing, electrical, uh, building inspector, and then the, the field person that we have, so that's why you have four, so, um.
Are there gonna be any training costs, are there ever gonna be any other hidden costs that we don't seem to be thinking about?
Training would be part of the evaluation.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, um, through you, Mr. Chairman? So, we actually spent more money on, on the build-out than what they actually quoted us in the beginning. And the reason we're spending so much on the build-out is we want to make sure each department had at least two forms that they could create. And while they're creating them with OpenGov's help, they're also getting the training that they need in order to build or tweak others. The other thing too is, is because OpenGov is a predom- predominantly, um, heavy in the state, it's, 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 um.
A lot of towns are using it.
A lot of towns using it, a lot of our neighbors are using it.
Okay.
Um, the, uh, we're also stealing, well, not stealing, we're.
Procuring.
Procuring, thank you. Um, all of Dudley's forms and all of Webster's forms with this build.
We, we are, we, we are borrowing them, right, we're just taking what's already been invented and we're using them.
Not reusing the.
Not reusing the, but we're adding to our special, special forms that we may wanna put in.
Okay.
You know?
And the other thing I just wanted to address is customer service, the customer servicing. When I was in the collector's office, we would have contractors or homeowners come in, try and pull a building permit, and then have to come back two or three times, because they're being told that taxes are paid, they haven't been paid. This will be part of that process, where, um, when a building permit is pulled or applied for, it will just start digging the different departments that need to, um, access it.
Because when you put the address in, it gives, goes right off the assessments map.
All right, thank you, I would like to see, eventually, somebody take a look at it and say, have we actually saved the money, so.
Yeah, I, I can, I can see your concerns, Council Marketti, i- is always, uh, once something runs out, how are you gonna pay for it and things like that, is a good concern. Um, I wanna make sure we have a long list growing, so, Ms. Counsel Dow, who's next?
That still allow people walk in the office and fill out a permit on, on the town hall, it's not gonna eliminate completely?
No, it will not eliminate it completely, however, they'll be, we will require them to do it on a computer, and if they need to be walked through by staff in the office, then we'll help them.
And that's the concern, is our staff so far is good, but are we gonna have the time to sit with somebody? Because you know, our town is still a lot of people in it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, not computers, uh, uh, experts and, and you know, uh, you know, I'm saying, you know, they need walk in, do we have the patience or the time? Our employees, some of them, they have that, uh, attitude to help our residents to, uh, walk their citizen through the process? Or they're just gonna say the computer theirs and?
That'll have to refer to the town manager.
And if I may, could I jump in?
It's up to the town manager, if you'd like to defer to Peg, sure, yep.
We sat on a call with Webster's health inspector, and what she said, we have the exact question, like, is this gonna be a burden to those who don't feel like doing it? Or who aren't comfortable doing it, and she said, first few months, for sure, there were people that would either call by phone, and they have to walk them through, had, you know, maybe fill out this or that if they weren't very comfortable with computers, or there were people that, that would still come to the counter and they would help them through it. And she said, but, you know, here they are six months later, and she said she does not have the same questions anymore. And, um, back to Marketti's, Council Marketti's question about, um, the, the usability for contractors, what she said was, if, you know, a lot of contractors in our area are now using the permitting, once they go in the first time, they, it co- they come right up now, they've got an account through many different towns now. So as long as they're OpenGov registered, they can use that, um, in any of our towns, which is really convenient for them.
Yeah, 'cause I, I share the same concerns as Counsel Dow, uh, when it comes to if someone comes into the building and they wanna pull a permit the old-fashioned way, let's say. Um, I'd hate to take something away from the people trying to get permits in town, rather than add this to try to complement it, but if you're saying that we have the support staff to walk them through it, like Counsel Dow's concerns are, um, it makes me feel a little better, but I also don't wanna, I don't wanna take something away from.
I, I'd say I believe most of the building permits come from contractors, or they know how to pull it, and they come from other towns. If a citizen comes in.
Mm-hmm.
Try to create this environment of.
Yeah.
Being friendly, and we, we continue to work on that, and, uh, I think, a resident comes in and they're pulling their first building permit, whether it's on a computer or paper, they're gonna ask questions anyway. What do I have to fill out, what exactly do I need, where do I have to go?
True.
You know what I mean, so if somebody's walking through it either with a paper or it's on a computer, so, that's the, would be my experience.
Oh, so, Counsel?
Yes.
Okay, um, Ms. Clemens was next, and Mr. Kelly?
Um, ch- ch- one question I have, I, I think I agree with the streamlining and time is money in and of itself for everybody. So when you talk about what's our cost savings, you have to look at the, the entire cost savings, as you said, two people can, 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 uh, converge and look at, look at their information online versus having to leave the fire department or leave the town hall, or leave somewhere else. So they can be much more efficient, and efficiency saves money, I mean, that's, that's a, you know, one of those factors, you have to, a lot of, it's not, you can't see it, but efficiency is important. It's also obviously clearly the future of things, I mean, regardless of how you go, electronics, you're taking your C S Ls online, you're taking all kinds of things. Those are quite interesting, as a matter of fact, when you get your contractor license online, you'd think they'd ask more questions for giving you that, but anyway. They don't, that's a scary thing, those people out there with C S L licenses. Um, but anyway, the one thing I would question about the contract, um, listening to Counsel Marketti too, is, you know, we have this cost for, uh, fiscal year twenty-four, whichever of the next one is, uh, I think it's twenty-four. Is there an escalator clause in this contract? Is there anybody looking at, uh, okay, like we do with a lot of our other contracts for I T and different things? The first year it's this much, they anticipate there might be no more than three percent or two percent, or, or it's a specific number. A lot of times you make a contract like this and you know what you're gonna pay the next three years or next five years, or whatever, whatever they wanna deem. So I would possibly question that as to whether or not we could, uh, find out what the, you know, what's maybe even a little historically wise, maybe Dudley, you know, where did you go up, what percent did you go up every year with these people, if you wanna do a little digging? Um, like you say, Acello said, oh, we're, we're high, well, that's great. Uh, but, so I would suggest that we know whether there's an escalator clause of some sorts, uh, you know, automatically they're anticipating a two percent or three percent, or they don't really care, they're gonna go up five, ten, twenty, and we won't, we'll be stuck. So maybe work that into something, if there's, like we've done with insurance, we've done that with, with numerous other contracts that we've dealt with, so, that would be a, a thought process.
Okay.
Uh, I think that's up to my question, thank you.
And I certainly share everybody's concern about price, because this town, we paid a lot of money to me this.
Let's not go there.
No, no, but it is a problem, it is a problem, we paid a lot of money and we.
When you're told somebody's cracking into the plant, they can't give you service.
When we make these investments, we wanna make sure we make the right investments, so that we don't have the problems.
I just wanna make sure that our internal people ask those questions, because before we didn't.
Yeah, no, I'm good.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, good.
Mr. Kelly?
Right, so, um, I think this is the future and the way forward, uh, certainly. I've just been doing with, uh, several contractors on my own home, they always complain themselves, which has to, you have to go here and, you know, you can't do it online, you have to go here personally and take time out of your day to do that. So I think it's a, a, a very business-friendly, uh, proposal. Um, I'm just curious, I'm a little concerned about the cost down the road. Um, the, uh, you know, I've always, I, I, I look back, I'm old enough to remember when computers were really first coming into use, and the promise was that it would, we would be basically, we wouldn't have, we would have a paperless society at some point. Well, that hasn't happened, so, so, I mean, in many ways it generates more paper. But, um, you know, I just wonder, have we done, I mean, have we done any type of manpower study? Are we saving any manpower hours, uh, man-hours, if you will, uh, on, um, uh, with implementing of, uh, this, uh, this kind of a, a process compared to what we're doing now? I'm just curious, I think it would be, um, maybe could, possibly could justify the cost a little better if we were able to do that.
I, I'm gonna say my three months that I've been here, I'm not aware of any manpower studies, and I don't remember any recent ones, but.
No, but you have to say that since we can't hire the people, we just, uh, can't hire people, you know, we don't have enough staff as it is, this has to make people more efficient, I mean, make them be able to do more in a shorter amount of time.
It appears that way.
It appears.
Did Miss Dean wanna weigh in on that, please?
I didn't, but, um, but similar to the, the thought process that Denise has, what we've seen with the transition in staff, uh, it is a struggle, right, with, say, with, you know, whatever is in the midst of, what's in the pipeline for those staff that are leaving? And so that ensures that continuity of operations better than, um, you, you know, any other measures, in my opinion. Uh, and just, you know, having examples of rifling for, for records, you know, this will be a big improvement of having electronic rec- records stored for us to be able to more easily access for historical data, so what we may not see today, we potentially will be seeing, you know, our residents and businesses coming back to look for historic information, um, they'll have a much easier time. From a Freedom of Information Act, um, request, you know, it'd be much easier for us to be able to pull information about certain, um, addresses, so that will be a time savings when those come up. And then what I also think about is, you know, if we're, we're trying to get to another place with revitalization, well, as that revitalization happens, we assume there's gonna be more contractors, there's gonna be more development happening, and so I feel like we're hedging ourselves, you know, putting ourselves in a position of deciding more ready for that.
Okay. Are you all set, Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Okay, great, uh, Counsel Shenya?
I think this is a great idea, we talked about this during the time when we were looking for a new D P W director, uh, when Knight was there, uh, uh, just, Matt will build it, help me out, maybe, for D P W use. Are they gonna be able to, like, enter information such as, uh, let's use, for instance, you got NUCO out there doing all these the holes, and they are supposed to pull a permit, they'll be able to enter that permit online and fill it out?
Yes.
And then the inspector, let's say they send somebody from D P W to that site to see if he's following through, is that inspector gonna be able to take a picture and send that picture to the D P W director of you, instead of always having to go out and recheck things?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, well, it also, like, for the, I would hope that the town manager mandates the fire department and all departments that they'll utilize this system, whether they like it or not.
Yeah, um, if I may, on that?
Please.
Yes, we're, we are talking to the fire chief, and the fire chief is very receptive to this, he has a program in place already, um, for E M S calls plus his fire calls, and we're talking about how he may be able to get rid of one and combine and merge and all that. So we are talking about that, and specifically like smoke per- permits and all that, but the, the goal is to be interactive, and we may be able to do a lot of the, uh, if they apply for a permit here, then it goes into their first due software and all that, so we are.
So, uh, and, and the reason I'm saying that is, especially in the inspections department, so if somebody, a contractor, something wants a smoke detector inspection, they go in there and fill out the application, and I would think that that application would be flagged, so the inspector would see that when he come into work the next day, or whenever he would look at it, and that the, the flag would show an open window, say, that, 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 that permit hasn't been finalized. I would, I, I'm hoping that that's what someone would do, whether it's here at D P W or in the building inspector. Is that soft- software gonna allow the contractor to be able to access the permitting, filling out the, the, the permit twenty-four seven?
Absolutely.
So, again, I, that's the biggest complaint that we have from the contractors, is that they come to town hall, it's closed, or they're not opened up early enough, or they get here too late, so fill it out, that application. Is that software gonna also allow the contractor to pay for that permit?
And they'll be able to upload plans, which we can take the plans and put those into the fire department's first due stuff.
Okay, so, and then my, my other thing, I, in Florida, when I was with the American Cross, they had a similar thing for tracking, uh, people's homes that were destroyed and stuff like that, and if a permit's been issued with people, stuff like that. There was an administrative fee on some of it, they added fifty cents to the permit to, uh, cover the cost. So maybe that's something that we can look into, if counsel is in favor of it, is to help pay for these things. And I know the inspection department brings in a lot of money, three hundred fifty, so a half million dollars a year, they can feed. So I think it's something that is going to pay, for, the money's there to pay for it, and it'll make it, it's business-friendly for everybody to be able to utilize. And my other concern is, now, for changing a permit, the administrative action, is it gonna be limited to certain people to be able to make a change into that? Say I ca- say I go in there tonight and I fill out my application, and I have questions and, and, and I say, jeez, I didn't do that. Not that anybody would do that, but is there gonna be an administrative person that can only make the changes?
So, man?
Hacking, so like once submitted?
Once it's submitted.
May, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
So what will happen is this, Counsel, each department, we're planning on having pretty much one administrator for their department. So, like, the building. So like the building department will be able to create and change whatever the building department permits are. But they're not going to be able to do that to the one-day local licenses or the local licenses. So that'll be done in our office.
Okay.
Okay?
That's right. Now, is there a possibility of adding an administrative fee, like fifty cents or whatever to a, to a permit?
There, I'll refer that to the town manager.
I mean, yeah, I mean, we, I would think that we would, we may wanna take a look at the fee structure in two years to see what changes are, not just here, but in the region. Where do we compare to other towns? I mean, uh, you know, every town does that, so we, right? We wanna be fair to all our residents, but we also, I mean, are we paying, I mean, I look at local licenses and I know, I also doubt it, yeah. But I look at a local license and there's one town that's three thousand dollars for a local license. We charge fourteen hundred, you know? Not that I'm advocating raising the fees, but you look at that every year. I mean, that's, that's where we look at. I mean, do you look at electrical, like our, uh, we do a lot of solar, do we look at different structures? So it's an exercise, I think we have to do with everything. Uh, not over, overfee people, but are we within what is reasonable for all the local communities?
And 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 I, I don't wanna over, overfee somebody, but if we, it's like, I'm gonna call it a convenience fee. Cause even for driver's licenses in Florida, you can go to a satellite office, they charge you two dollars and fifty cents for going to that satellite office, and if you went to the main office, you save two dollars and fifty cents. So it's, it's, maybe we can reduce a fee by a few bucks by going online to fill it too and save a little money that way.
And I would just, we have to remember too, that we're providing a service and there's a cost to that service. So that's why we have to evaluate. Costs do go up, but we are, we are required to do these inspections. It's not something we to say we, oh, we wanna do that. We're required by law to do that. There's a, there's a salary, there's a fee behind it, there's gas, there's all those expenses, and we have to look at those expenses and say, are we in the right range for the services that we provide? But by doing this, we're providing a friendly, timely or service. So that's, we are in a service industry.
In my providing this, I don't doubt that you see an increase in permitting by the contractors out there instead of taking the chance of doing something without a permit. Uh, once we provide something that is easier for a contractor to do, I think you may see an increase in permitting from those contractors. Because there's some people who go out there, I'll be honest, they just won't fill a permit because they don't wanna come here and deal with town hall.
Um, Ms. Dean, would you like to add something?
I did, yeah. Just, I love that we have a year and a half to evaluate while we're covered under the grant time to be able to see how much activity there is and have that time to potentially, like the the manager said, you know, have that two-year evaluation in two years of, of, yes, so this window of opportunity.
Okay. Um, Ms. Clemens?
Thanks. To, to Mr. Shenier's point on fees or administration fee or something, we have to, you know, yeah, the taxpayers pay for everyone's salaries, right? That's great. But the reason you have fees for certain things is because those things that the taxpayers are technically providing by hiring everybody are not applicable to all taxpayers though, right? Because the only people that are then using or extr- extruding services and in time and energy from the people we hire are the people who need a specific service. So it makes sense that if there's some type of small administrative or whatever you wanna call it, convenience or whatever, it makes sense that those using the service should outrightly have to, you know, have something more than those not. And yeah, there's the permitting to begin with, but again, the permitting is something a town has to do in some way, shape or form. So that little extra that could bring in enough to cover this perhaps with the amount of permits apparently that we do um, might, might be something def- I, I would highly suggest that. I think that's a great idea and I think that it's, it's applicable to the people needing the service. And that's, you know, it doesn't have to relate to everybody who pays taxes in this town.
All right, uh, Counselor Dow.
Thank you.
Are we complying a couple of years, the same grant to cover that program? Number one.
Ms. Clemens?
Unfortunately, typically grants are not for ongoing operating costs, so this is for capital. And the state was kind enough to say that we could roll in this, the first year to our implementation. So we're already getting a walk around.
Question two, the builders online, like when we pay the water and sewer or the taxes, like fifty cents if you pay by check and, and the fees on the credit card. But when you pull a permit, ten, fifteen thousand dollars and you wanna put a credit card, who's paying for the fee for the credit? And I, the contractor is gonna be able to submit the application online and come write a check personally in the town to save the fee? Or no, he has to do the whole thing online? Or he can pull up the application, send it, and they come here, give the check to save the fee? Or because, you know, technically you're gonna pay fee if you're gonna pay credit card online or something?
So we sat in on a call with Enfield's Building Commissioner.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, we sat in on a call with the Enfield's Building Commissioner, uh, who uses Open Hub, and they showed us what they, how they have their flow. We can set it up how we feel is appropriate, and so the way they do it is you can fill out the permit and then they can hold it until they get payment. And so that payment can come in by either check or, you know, or if there is the option to pay online. So we could set up.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, Counselor Dow. And I do appreciate all the council's concerns and citizen members because this item in particular has been something that is, uh, important to me personally. Since we've got here, I've heard nothing but complaints about, uh, especially the saving your, your user data when you go to pull a permit and how easy it would be to pull a second permit later. How people want that to happen, so. Um, and and as far as the, the last point, I know that when we do pay, uh, your bills through the assessor's office, you do have the option to pay by check online, and that is only fifty cents. So I do hope that it's something we can make available, ACH payment, hopefully, um, as Counselor Dow was saying, to save money. Um, if, is, is, they don't offer ACH payments or?
So, um, the, in order to use their bank
Yeah.
and their, uh, convenience payments, it's three percent on top of whatever.
Okay, so it's not fifty cents like the assessors, okay? Three percent, like when Counselor Dow brings up fifteen thousand, becomes a lot of money.
Correct. But again
You can hold it and have them come into the office. I understand, I understand. Thank you. Uh, does anybody else have anything else?
Only one thing.
Mm-hmm.
I just noticed that there's a difference in cost here. One says one seventy-nine, two-five-three. Your agenda says one forty-three, three-six-oh. I was just wondering why, what's the difference?
Okay, so that one seventy-nine is actually the fiscal year twenty-six. They had to do the quote to include fiscal year twenty-six, but we don't have to pay it until fiscal year twenty-six.
Oh, we are locked into paying that?
No, if we don't have the money after eighteen months, it's over.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Um, does anybody else have anything? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Agenda item number eight is review and discuss an economic development and planning transfer request, forty-one thousand, six hundred dollars from account number zero-zero-one-one-seven-five-dash-five-one-one-zero-zero-zero. Town planner salary to account number zero-zero-one-one-seven-five-dash-five-three-zero-zero-zero-zero. Specialized services to continue services for an interim town planner. Entertain a motion for account, uh, approval to council.
Second.
Okay, and comments? Okay, Mr. Manager?
Um, we had voted to extend, the town planner can come here till June and, or until we fire the planner. This would just allow us to have the funds to pay it, that contract through the end of the year.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Um, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Agenda item number nine is review and discuss an assessor department transfer request of five hundred dollars from account number zero-zero-one-one-four-one-dash-five-one-one-zero-zero-zero. Full-time salaries to account number zero-zero-one-one-four-one-dash-five-seven-one-one-zero-zero. Conferences and meetings to provide training to the department. Entertain a motion for approval to town council.
So. Second.
Okay, Mr. Manager?
So, um, I think I've mentioned several times, we have an individual in the assessor's office that, um, because we are not getting any applicants for, uh, a principal assessor, um, the individual has expressed interest to become an assessor. She has already taken the first one-on-one class. This would be for her to be able to take the next assessor's course that's required through the, uh, program. So we're trying to develop our own staff to assume the role as an assessor. And we don't have enough money in that account right now, so that's why we have to transfer, um, of that for her to be able to take the class. It's a online program, so there's no Typically, it used to be you go to UMass for, for the week. This is all online, so it's all via Zoom now, so she'll be taking the class while she's here.
Okay, understood. Um, anybody have anything? Uh, Ms. Clemens?
Thanks. Um, nothing against, I, I like the people in the office, but I have to ask this question. It, so we're paying for these courses in order to hopefully, uh,
We're gonna train the individual.
Train the individual inside. Do we have any assurances? Is this individual signing for any amount of year or years? Um, and if not, to pay back the training that we, um, like a lot of companies do? If you don't give us a year, two years, three years, whatever, they can pay us back?
I ha- I have not, uh, pursued that. This course is three hundred and fifty dollars for the course?
Well, right, no, it's five, okay.
Well, because we, we can have a course later on. I mean, for, we're not spending
I understand.
You know, I, I'm investing in time and money in an individual that lives in town, that wants to be the assessor that has worked at that office.
I'm not saying anything against the individual. I'm talking about what we are doing as a, setting a precedent to train anybody. Do we require like anybody, like, like a number of other places that I'm aware of? That, you know, you generally have to have some sort of commitment to the, I don't care whether you live here or you live in Timbuktu. You might not be committed in the end. Nothing against this person in general. I, I like the people there, I really do. I'm just saying, as a, I'm just asking procedurally, do we have anything in place that says when we invest a thousand dollars or five thousand dollars or five hundred dollars of taxpayer money into some, into the trainings, do we, you know, do we ask down the road if they're gonna get this, you know? Do we require anybody to stay on? And maybe, maybe you don't, maybe you can't jump in regular.
At this time, we don't have anything in our policy for that. Uh, I'll refer to Peg. I do know the police department does that because it's a substantial cost. So they, if somebody leaves the police department within the first two years, they have to pay back three thousand dollars. And an individual that left went to the state police, I believe, in that field, and then left, and we're trying to recoup that money, so I know that, but
Right.
Uh, Peg has an answer. She's more familiar with it than I am.
My only comment might be that when recruiting for the town, one of our selling points is that we do pay for education. And so this would be similar, right? It's a way for us to lure quality employees who are more educational opportunities, and this might be sort of a similar situation.
Okay, so we do, we do have a policy to pay for education. Do we give a certain amount per year generally? I'm just, I don't know the policy.
We do if people apply for it, yes.
We have a certain pool of money, it's up to
It's a small amount, it's not
Small amount. I think it's three thousand dollars, per educational reimbursement.
In, in overall?
No, I think per person.
No, no, but I mean, per, yeah, but overall or per year or per?
Town. Uh-huh.
Right, for their employment.
Per individual, it's per year.
It's per year, right, like, like our
But there's no requirement. We can pay for somebody's education. There's no, we can drop three thousand dollars in a year for their education and they can leave tomorrow.
That's what I'm asking, okay. So that's, that's, that's all, so then this, this falls within the, this falls within that, that's what I guess.
Yeah.
But maybe, yeah, drop him three grand and then somebody leave an onion six, I mean, maybe there should be a policy of something, pay it back or portion.
Okay, um, Mr. Kelly?
I, I, I tend to
You?
No, no.
So, um, I, I tend to, uh, look at the educational benefits that we're providing people as a little different than what this is. Um, that is part of their compensation package, pretty much. That's what we promise them when they come in. So having a payback, the education really wouldn't make much sense if we're saying upfront that this is part, this is what we offer as a benefit. This, however, is a little different in that it, um, uh, we, we have a position that this person is trying to qualify for. Um, and the town is paying it. So if this was something, if, if, if we recruited, this is like the police department, we were gonna pay three thousand dollars for them to attend the municipal police academy, then, um, you know, certainly we, if, if they failed or if they just decided to leave our employment a month after graduating the academy, we should have some recourse to recoup that money. This is kinda nominal, in my view, so I'm not all that concerned about it. Um, but I think, you know, I do agree that there probably should be a policy when we do, um, when we, when we do, uh, take it, uh, a substantial, uh, we do pay a substantial amount for, uh, somebody's education, um, beyond the benefits that we're already promising, uh, for town employment, that, um, we should have some way to recoup that if somebody were to leave without. So, anyway, that's all, that's my only comment.
Okay, uh, Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Chair, for you. Uh, I think like, uh, previous, uh, town manager, McColl, will pay five thousand dollars for some class he took, and he took off. Similar, I, I think, uh, Ms. Clemens, she's got a point, maybe certain amount over thousand or over five hundred, you know, but we pay five thousand dollars and not either a year he take off, so. Maybe should be kinda policy, so on a certain amount. I mean, not five hundred dollars, but thank you.
Thank you. I tend to agree, uh, with everybody's concerns here. But again, this one, um, you know, we, we don't have any applicants and we're, we're not trying to chase away the one person who's interested and that we're interested in helping, and thankfully, it's a very, uh, small fee compared to some of the things that we're talking about. I, I agree with everyone's concerns here. Um, does anybody else have anything on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Agenda item number ten is review and discuss the human resource transfer request of three hundred dollars from account number zero-zero-one-one-five-two-dash-five-seven-one-zero-zero-zero. Mileage to account number zero-zero-one-one-five-two-dash-five-four-two-zero-zero-zero. Supplies to cover necessary purchases used to update human resources information. Entertain a motion for approval to town council.
So.
Second.
And, Mr. Manager?
Uh, this is a request of, uh, human resources director. The, the request is to transfer to replenish the supplies account to continue bringing the human resources posting requirements into compliance and to purchase the necessary supplies for department functions.
Okay. Anybody have any discussion, Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Chair. Are we gonna come up with a new policy that can do up to whatever we decide, thousand dollars, whatever, and they don't have to come to us?
It's up to you, Senator.
Yeah, um, so we, that was something that Counselor Adams, uh, had brought forth originally. We had, we had talked about, um, the last we mentioned was that there was supposed to be some sort of audit of the financial administrative practices here. And, um, whether that's happening or not, it appears we've hired, uh, a great deal of financial help that's starting soon. And I think, um, it would be a great task to have the financial department recommend something, a, a, a number. Cause we were prepared to move forward with, uh, Counselor Adams' proposal and, and hash out exactly how that would look, but we, we were trying to wait um, until some sort of guidance from the financial department, some sort of recommendation, um, without getting too off topic here. So it is still something that we plan to do and, uh, it, it is something that I too would like to see. Um, and a recommendation from the finance committee, once they're all landed, uh, I think we just, it would be appropriate to help us make our decision. Um, but that's a great question. Did you have anything else, Counselor? Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on this item? Counselor Marquetti?
I was just curious, I, I didn't quite underst- didn't quite get what you were saying that she was purchasing with this. Just says information, so, but still a bit more specific?
Well, we have to put posters up that say what the state laws are, what the federal laws are and all that, for them to be able to post.
So that's what she's purchasing with this? All right, thank you.
Anybody else?
Well, it was to the, to the other point before you go on with it. I would think that the, the town manager's, town manager's budget, budget, the town manager is responsible for inter and intra-department, uh, processes and such. And I think that he should continue to put his pedal to the metal and head into the tank and all that and think what sounds right and makes sense to him with the overall operations between departments and in departments as we've discussed for years on this particular situation, and then go from there. Um, I think finance, that's great, finance has a lot on their plate. Um, I think he finance, that's great, finance has a lot on their plate, and wait, I'm sure they have an idea, well geez. What do they care, they're not even here at these meetings to to know what we have to, or council has to deal with for minimal five dollar transfers to. Thousand dollar transfers or ten thousand dollars or whatever. So there is a, there is a transfer, there is a small transfer policy scenario, I think it just needs to be worked on and agreed upon at some level amongst council as. What we've talked about for years, I don't know what, I don't recall, I'll have to find Counselor Adams, maybe get a copy of it from that. Um, what Counselor Adams' proposal was, I guess I missed it, but just saying, it's not something we haven't kicked around for many years now. And I think it's time, it comes a time.
Yeah, we'll stay on topic, I don't disagree with what you're saying.
I just think that the TM has a lot to interject on that, because he has to deal with the with the budget and. Who is accountable to their budget and what can they reasonably anticipate?
All recommendations end up coming from the town manager's office and I'm sure he will use all of his department heads necessary to make. His recommendations as sound as he always does, um, is there anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Manager?
I've I've talked a little bit on this transfer policy.
Yeah.
I mean, I certainly understand, and we've talked about this. Uh, a ten percent transfer out of a police department salary account?
No, no, no.
No, no, what I'm saying, should come to council, because that's big dollars.
Yes.
But three hundred dollars, when you're trying to manage, you're trying to say, yeah, I'm gonna move this to here and this to here. And you know, and trying to balance at the end of the year, it just, it gets cumbersome, it's it's it's. Um, you know, and and the checking balances, hey, it comes to me, uh, it goes to finance, finance is here, there's money. And I've had this conversation with many finance directors that have been here before about what makes sense, but we'll come back with that.
Yeah.
And then there was the drone.
And then there was the drone, well, without getting too off topic though, I do enjoy drone joke, um. If nobody else has any other discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Agenda item number eleven is review and discuss human resources transfer request of sixty nine dollars from account number zero zero one one five two. Dash five seven one zero 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 mileage to account number zero zero one one five two. Dash five seven three zero 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 dues, to cover dues to the society for human resource management. Entertain a motion approval for town council.
So.
Alright, Mr. Manager, uh, it looks pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah, it's just, they call it SHRM, membership, which will allow access to compliance resources, HR advisors, guides, tools. And learn resources towards a certification credential, so. And I've also had a conversation with Bill, who's the school department human resources individual. Because I got information from actually Dean, who's coming aboard, who belongs to another organization, which is called Maspo, which is for. On the school side for human resources, where there's a lot of resources, so I think the school's gonna do their membership over there. Get three individuals, so he's gonna have Nor join that one at no cost to us. And that one's a little bit more expensive, but we we talked about that cooperation, so. And just resources that they have, listservs that they can go on and, hey, we have questions about, you know, um, an employment issue. Hey, I got this issue, you get a bunch of different people through the government, say, this is how we handle it, it's just a great resource to to do that.
Great, um, does anybody have any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Agenda item number twelve is review and discuss a grant application by the recreation department for fifty thousand dollars from T-Mobile. And ninety thousand dollars from the youth development foundation to supplement a hundred twenty five thousand dollars allotted through ARPA funds. For lighting at the Little League field on Henry Street and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork. Entertain a motion for approval of the town council. Okay, Mr. Manager?
So Mike, our recreation director had requested it, we just put this forward, there was a time um, sensitivity. To that uh, request, that's why I, it was the addendum to this agenda, so I do apologize. Uh, we try to uh, keep all revised. Um, I thought this, I thought this item deserves a conversation in the subcommittee. As opposed to bring it right to council for a full dialogue, so that I could get a sense of what's, what it is, as well as. The committee that can debate about decide whether we should go to the full council, with a recommendation.
Um, just a quick question, uh, cause I know there was some, some concern that this item was added late. Um, is this something that would have kind of dissolved, had we not been able to handle it by the eighteenth meeting and go through?
It would have been a, uh, no, sorry about that, uh, it was a cycle grant, the uh, T-Mobile grant is um. Due on January second, so they have a springtime cycle that I could apply for, but.
So had we missed this meeting, you wouldn't have been able to apply for it at all, if if the council.
That one probably would have been tougher, uh, the other grant, the youth development foundation one is um, open.
Okay.
All year round, so it was just time sensitive on wanting to get the ball field lights for springtime.
No, true, it it's, and you know, there's uh, open meeting law, we talked about what emergency means, um, and is it emergency? Certain, it's not a life or death situation of any kind, but if you're saying that if this didn't go to this council meeting, that the opportunity for this grant would have. And basically disappeared, cause there's no other meeting before January second. Um, I just wanted to weigh in my two cents that this is why I allowed the revision to the agenda as the chairman. Um, just for everybody's uh, and the cameras transparency, um, Ms. Clemens, yes?
Mike, Mr. Verdell, when did you know about this grant? And so you're telling me you're gonna get this grant written and and ready to go just before the meeting, or you already did the grant?
I am.
Permission to put it in?
It's in a draft, I can't submit it until it's approved.
So when did you know about, when did you?
The T, the T-Mobile grant?
Emergency, I think we should have just pushed over, but uh, when when did you find out about the T-Mobile grant?
Yes, uh, so that was from a prior engagement, I met with um, someone who was trying to bring outdoor fitness courts to Southbridge. Um, location, time, other funds that just aren't there, um. Didn't bring that to fruition, or I didn't see that as something to push at the moment, as far as parks, so. Heard this grant, it's very open-ended, it's fifty thousand dollars, up to fifty thousand dollars. For uh, communities that have populations of under fifty thousand people, so it's really trying to help small towns in America. Um, but again, open-ended, it's supposed to help bring technology, um, shore up disadvantages in um, towns, so. As long as you're able to make that argument.
Right.
Yes.
So um, so it's due January second, you have a draft already?
Yes.
Okay, so to the, just so we just don't hash this out any longer about uh, open meeting law, just it it's it's a a previous counselor and uh. Many reasons, you just need to be more timely with your asks, because you can't sit there and say you didn't know about this. Sooner than what this was, but we will pass over and we're gonna discuss cause it's important and do whatever the chair says. But from my personal perspective, you can't just, you know, if you've got the draft and you knew about this a while back, then you should have got this to to this agenda.
Apologies, yeah, no, T-Mobile was probably within the last two months that I heard about it.
Right.
Putting together as far as costs, um, getting quotes together for the baseball fields, the money that we had allotted. I faced off of uh, equipment only on an accident, thought it'd include installation, so it was kind of backtrack.
Work on your, on your pay, to do all that work and not get permission to go forward with that, you really kind of itch the cart before the horse, you just wanna. Come, present that you're gonna apply for these grants, so that they know you're spending your time and money searching for the grants, which is great, it's fantastic of the town. I'm just asking you in the future to remember the open meeting laws and and just to be more mindful of um, any any committees uh, schedule. The the cha- the uh, the chairman's schedules, you know, for putting agendas out to the public, that's all I'm asking, public uh, uh. Clarity, transparency is.
No, totally understand, last minute revisions, no one's offended.
I'd rather just hear about what it is we're gonna get money for, cause you're gonna work on it.
Mr. Town Manager?
I'm certainly from my office, I'll do a better job communicating with it, we just have, we've had a lot of things going on. A lot of grants are moving and and we encourage people to look for grants, we have to do a better job and we had communication earlier today about. The other projects that we do in town and how we fund it and how we move forward, putting all these things, packages together beforehand. Because we, a lot of people have inherited things from different individuals. And we get to the crunch time of funding and it's like, well, there was this money, there was this money and. So as a team, we're gonna work together to make sure that we have tighter processes. Um, before we put things forward, um, as we develop, and we know things change, but. Um, so this is another project down there on Henry Street, it's great, put lights, you know, could we go for the grant? Great, if we can, let's do it, but we'll have a better process going forward as we settle in. Going forward, so I have responsibility for the timing on this, I apologize for any confusion, but.
Just as I said, my point was for people to to, for workers to spend time on something that 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 is not uh, you know. Either one, it's gonna be something that's a funded, a dual funding, say, right, where council's gonna have to vote to give money, or maybe it's not, maybe it's free money. That doesn't require to do anything but accept it and and pay for some baseballs or something, either way, it's all good. But obviously, if you want the buy-in from the council to then accept that grant when it comes in, whether it's for baseballs or for streetlights or whatever it is. That you still kind of, they need to be aware that it might be coming at them, even then they might say no, right? Um, but I'm just saying, so rather than waste employee time on something that, yeah, we don't wanna accept a grant for. A or X or something, we're not into that, we're not gonna ever let you get those pieces, that drum or something. Um, you know, why waste the time, you know, on on working on a grant for it? That's all I'm saying, so again, cut for the worst and just, I think, like I say, if you've got a policy, if you've got something going forward, you can instill in your people. That'd be great for everybody and not waste time, that's all.
Thank you, I don't, I recognize Counselor Dow in one, but I'd like to personally thank you for your, all your work on this. And and I'd like to thank the town manager, I appreciate that you revised the agenda yesterday and put this on the agenda. Uh, to get it forward before Christmas time, so thank you very much for doing that, um, uh, Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Chair, same thing, thank you for, either last minute, free money is good for the town itself, but. Uh, this question, this is for the light, you say, correct?
It's for ball field lighting, yes.
Isn't it? Do we approve some kind of grant for the whole field to update lighting and everything and that?
Different fields, we're talking the Little League fields that we would install lighting.
So.
There's no light in there right now.
There's a little bit of a history, okay, so, thank you so much for letting me do this. Again, I'll get to why I got to these grants so late, we'll work on it, getting getting it done for.
It's all, it's all good.
As far as, um, we did have ARPA funds approved for this field, um, we did just get the softball field updated. Um, ARPA funds were approved through a um, a estimate that I held up to be what I thought was full turnkey. It was only for the equipment, poles and lighting. It is a higher-end company, they basically own the northeast and a little bit beyond as far as getting um. Ball field lighting for uh, surrounding towns and much bigger areas than just Little League fields. So we're hoping to find a cheaper price, but as far as from what I've seen, uh, there is a possibility that there might be a cheaper option through. Guardian, who did the softball field lighting. Um, but from what I've seen, it looks like most of it will be much upwards than uh, a hundred and twenty five thousand. Which was approved by ARPA and closer to around the two hundred thousand dollar range. And that's for steel poles, again, there could be a cheaper way for um, wooden poles and are discussing it with other groups. Um, but it seems like a hundred and twenty five thousand for most cases, from the quotes that I've been getting back, estimates. It seems like it's gonna be somewhere in the ballpark of a hundred seventy five thousand, maybe two hundred thousand, so. Again, over the, uh, I believe it was early January, February, when that ARPA money was approved through council. Yeah, so had the summer, all that fun stuff with the kids and everything, got back down, sat down. Understood that I was lacking in funds desperately, so I started to look for grants. Then I started to piece together, well, this T-Mobile one, if I don't use it for this thing that I first heard about it for. Maybe it's applicable for this, read it over, seems like I could make an argument that it could be for field lighting. Um, and then the MLB, Youth Development Foundation also has um, uh, grants. Both these grants, by the way, are um, no matching funds, so this money would just be ours if we if we want it. Um, and they support field lighting as long as it's fifty percent of the um, capital plan is funded already. Which through the ARPA funds, it would have been, so um, I would like to apply for these grants to hopefully get us over the hump. That um, I am lacking in and getting installation in, cause reaching out to other rec departments and speaking with uh, pole installers. It looks like it's gonna be closer to eighty five to ninety five thousand for pole installation alone, so. Hopefully, if I'm able to find a cheaper supplier for equipment.
As a resident.
Yes.
In town of Souths Beach and uh, serve on the board, I wanna thank you for being honest, cause not a lot of people. Obviously say the truth most of the time, you know, they're saying, you know, uh, forget or not enough, whatever. And thank you for moving forward and keep uh, applying to get that field for the kids.
It is the one thing that Little League, if they had a magic wand and could just wave something down in town, it is something that they wanna get done.
So I wanna thank you very much, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Markany?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, uh, just a couple of things, first of all, I thought, I thought recreation went to EHS. The last two times you went to EHS and now you're at general government, are we going back and forth?
I wanted to get it to a subcommittee and it wasn't time to get it to EHS, so I just, because it was a contract and a grant, I just wanted to give it a thumbs up.
Alright.
Again, if it's standing in a way of quorum, I totally understand.
Subcommittee and avoided this whole discussion about um, timely or whatever, but.
Well, trying to get a chairman to schedule it as well, there's all kinds of scheduling in my office and them and trying to get their other members to schedule.
Make a big deal out of it, I'm just saying.
So is the, either put it. Either put it here or go straight to council.
Okay.
And at least here it's a subcommittee, there's subcommittee, there's vetting, there's questions and. And like honestly, I think we have to have a conversation about what goes where and who, because this is really a contract grant opportunity, it's really not. You know, education and human services.
Several times he's come to EHS.
No, no.
That's who I normally refer to.
So.
Alright, uh, the other thing is uh, uh, first of all, ARPA funds, we approved a hundred and thirty thousand, not a hundred and twenty five.
So that's, I did see that on the town council meeting, and that's what I was a little con- yeah, confused about, cause I saw a hundred and twenty five somewhere, but.
I thought it was a hundred and thirty.
I will look into it, but yeah, that's the, yeah.
I thought, I looked at the ARPA spreadsheet and it said a hundred and thirty, so.
I'll take it if it's a hundred and thirty.
And you did say at the ARPA money that the total funding was a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty, but now you're saying.
I can show you the.
Didn't count for installation or?
Okay, I can show you the estimate and this is where it's a little embarrassing, the indent, that's supposed to be, yes, that's supposed to be just equipment. The installation.
You said total, but I see now that they.
And that's the accident.
Including the installation.
So they did have it included, it's just this total is all three numbers combined instead of these two numbers.
So then the youth funds, I thought that was going for the dog park, right, that ninety thousand dollars, I thought that was for a dog park.
Stanton Foundation, there's a Stanton Foundation grant that we've looked into, but it's for a dog park.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yeah, separate from this money.
I thought it was the youth, but it's a different grant, okay, so in the end, adding all this up, it's two hundred and sixty five thousand dollars for lights.
Yes, and.
The software was only a hundred and twenty nine thousand, why's, why the big difference there?
Software from?
The softball.
Oh, softball, yes, okay, so uh, there's different standards, if there, if we would like to hold a tournament, which I reached out to the Little League president. Who also read the quote wrong, um, was, uh, they would like to have the standards up to the Little League um. Association standards, which they actually outlawed wooden poles in nineteen ninety four. So that's what we have over at a soft, at the softball fields and what makes it a lot cheaper. Um, also, I'm not sure about the lighting that they'd be presenting us, but it's something called foot candles and it's the amount of light that covers the area. Um, and the minimum for uh, uh, baseball field, Little League is fifty infield foot candles and thirty outfield. So um, this one, like I said, is a great company, but more of like a Cadillac version, so all that stuff's guaranteed, but that's. Yes, closer to the two hundred thirty, two hundred sixty thousand dollar range. And then I I've been getting quotes back somewhere around the one eighty five was a quick estimate. So I would probably say somewhere in the ballpark of two hundred thousand at least for, or close to for ballpark lighting.
Okay.
Cause installation is.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, and again, thank you for your honesty, um, uh, PEG?
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mike, you just brought up the steel poles versus the wood poles, the cheaper um, pole we were pursuing through Guardian. Uh, was for wood poles and then Mike uh, pointed out that there are these standards for tournaments for uh, for baseball leagues. That they have to add these steel poles, so it's, you know, it's a matter of, you know, for what purpose are you getting the lights? Is to be able to draw in these tournaments, is to be able to play these certain leagues, et cetera, that require those standards. Um, the price comparisons also with the the adults softball league, um, they already had their eight poles. And those eight poles just needed the lights converted from their old light uh, to new LEDs. So significantly cheaper for forty five thousand dollars at most, and then we actually looked at while we were doing that, could we use those poles? And then we actually looked at while we were doing that, could we use those poles, face them, just put extra lights on those poles to face them over to the baseball field. It's like a cheap solution for them to at least have longer ball games or longer practices under the existing conditions. And that wasn't an option because of the way it was going to cast. It was a.
Clarify.
Right, just blind them. So that wasn't an option either. So it's unfortunate that we haven't been able to find a sort of happy medium.
Does anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I, I just wanna clarify, Mike.
Yes.
I'm very supportive of the efforts that you're making here.
You're all good.
I would have not even talked about this because I actually brought it up prior to the meeting. So I would not have discussed the open meeting law publicly like that with you at this point because it wasn't necessary. But just so you know, it's not about the projects and I applaud your efforts. It's just about the practices. So thank you very much for, uh, for everything you're doing for the community.
No problem. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Agenda number thirteen is adjournment.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned at eight sixteen PM.